Welcome, everybody. I'm gonna call the regular scheduled meeting for Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, City of Elgin, City Council to order at 6:01 PM. And we'll go roll call in order, starting with Brad.
Jones here.
Lopez here.
Bag, are you here?
We know she's.
Benson here.
Yeah, Bag it, Bag it here.
Benson here.
Cannon here. Juan? We can't hear you. I hear him, I see him saying it, I just can't hear him. Gonzalez has indicated he's here. Two.
Frager's here.
Dennis here.
All right, I certify that we have a quorum. Please let the record reflect that all members are present, with the exception of Susie, Councilmember Ariaga, who may be joining us. We can excuse her at another time if she doesn't show up. So then we'll go, go to the invocation. Councilmember Lopez, will you lead us in that, please?
Dear only Father, thank you for this time that we get to spend together during these times. Help us make good decisions for the city and its citizens, and just give an honest and wisdom on how to handle certain situations. I pray that we make the best decisions that we can, and that you guide us along with those. In Jesus' name, pray, amen.
Thank you.
Amen.
All right, we're gonna skip the pledge and a public comment. Is anybody signed up? Tom?
No, sir, I didn't hear from anybody.
Okay. Then we'll go on to the proclamation. If you'll excuse me one second, it's on my printer, one minute.
You can do the next slide there, Pam.
Knew I was missing one thing, that was it. Are y'all still hearing me okay?
Good.
Okay. All right. This is the Juneteenth, 2020 proclamation. I'm gonna read it, read it for us real quick, because they were gonna play, play the clip of that for, for their members, since they're not meeting this year. Whereas, the Emancipation Proclamation was signed into law by President Abraham Lincoln on January 1st, 1863. And whereas Texans did not receive word of this proclamation until June 19th, 1865, when Major Gordon Granger sailed into Galveston and issued a general order declaring that, in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. And whereas this year, the 21st Elgin Juneteenth Organization Parade and Celebration was scheduled to be held on Friday and Saturday, June 12th and 13th, in conjunction with a variety of other events in historic downtown Elgin, but due to COVID-19 and the need to keep everyone safe, celebration was regrettably canceled. Whereas, the Elgin Juneteenth Celebration being canceled in no way diminishes the importance of the commemoration of Emancipation Day in Elgin, Texas. The celebration is scheduled for June 19th in Elgin to commemorate the emancipation message reaching Texas. And whereas the 2020 National Theme for Juneteenth is together we will see Juneteenth Independence Day become a national holiday in America. And whereas the 2020 theme in Elgin, Texas is let's put unity back into community. Now therefore, I, Chris Cannon, Mayor of the City of Elgin, Texas, Bastrop County, proclaim June 19th, 2020 as Juneteenth Day in Elgin, Texas. And I urge, I urge all citizens to participate in this observance of Juneteenth by participating in the Juneteenth festivities celebrating the proud heritage of African Americans. When it's thereof, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Elgin, Texas to be affixed this 16th day of June, 2020. Thank you very much. Amy, I'm certain you'll get that too. Yeah, there's me and Betty. I guess you'll get that to them and maybe work with Betty on getting a, a video clip for them of us reading that and acknowledging it. All right, moving on to the City Manager's Report. Tom, I'll just let you go. Several items today, so I'll just let you go.
All right, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, as Mayor said, we've got a few reports we want to make and, and just update on council, but feel free to ask any questions or jump in here as we go. These are kind of routine updates and reports. The first being, as councils aware, we went to a modified level, threat level three on our, our COVID-19 readiness plan. Partially reopening the city in a lot of ways. I'm not gonna go through all these issues. The, the full report, the analysis is included in your packets, as well as provide another copy of the original readiness plan, so folks can see the different steps we go through. Go to the next one, Pam. These are, we're trying to open the different buildings. Most, all city buildings are now open, at least partially. We're trying our best to get the rec center open as we can get in here, but to do all these things as, as safe and, and as, as close as we can to all social gathering, social distancing protocols. I want to draw council's attention in particular to our plans for the swimming pool, and just to make sure we're on the same page, just because we've talked about this again. We, we do believe that, that as long as we don't take a big turn for the worst, that we can, we're preparing to open the pool for limited use, and by the July 4th weekend. As you can see here, as described, it is very, gonna have to be very limited use, and, and I'm sure many will see it as a compromised use of the pool, but, but we wanted to try to get, get it open, at least partially for this summer, and, and that's our goal. And then as it relates to just city parks in general, our position is that we're trying to, all facilities are generally open with social distancing in place, but, but people use all those facilities at their own risk. We simply can't assure sanitization after overuse down there. For that same reason, we're gonna keep the restrooms closed and the restrooms in the parks for now. Next slide. The rest of our operation, we continue to encourage strong employee practices. I think we're doing that, even though we've opened the building here at City Hall, we've seen minimal foot traffic here. It's clear to the staff that we're seeing numbers of folks that used to walk in the building to pay their water bill, a whole lot more of them are using the drive-through still. People are mostly wearing masks, so, so we're, I think people are trying to be protective. We're trying to be responsive to them, but at the same time, be careful ourselves. This is the list of our recreation programming. I wanted to mention, relative to the last item, as council may remember, that the annual Juneteenth Festival Parade that we had every year, the Festival Committee made the decision early on to cancel that parade and festival for this year. We also won't, we, we'd met with a, a second individual representing a group, trying to do a different type of Juneteenth event, but we just couldn't get together on the same page about doing something that would be safe and reasonable to do at this time. There is a, Chief South, if you can jump in here, help me, there's a prayer parade or a prayer vigil at the police station for Juneteenth on Friday morning, is that right? Do I have that right?
Yes, or 10 AM, it's totally, it's, it's not a protest, it's called a prayer test, and they're having it at 10 AM with the N double A C P sponsoring it.
And that'll be in front of the police station?
Yes, it will.
Okay. So the community leaders are doing that for recognition of Juneteenth, so just might want to put that on your calendar. And building inspection, go ahead, I'm sorry, Mayor.
It's Friday at 10 o'clock.
That's right, that's right. And then building inspection, construction, we're, again, another case of something that we're continuing to see progress. We're, some of our bigger projects have slowed down, some of the bigger projects are moving forward full steam. It's another example of something that fortunately, before we got into this event, we, as you know, we'd been working toward a much more automated online system for permits, inspections, different requests, and, and although I can't claim we timed it around the COVID virus, we, it really came in good, and we're seeing a lot of people, we're using that through our, our more restricted times, and they're continuing to do that now. So we see a lot of activity there, but, but not very much of it here in person at City Hall, so. So that's generally my overview on the COVID response, and I don't know if anybody had any specific questions about that before we move on.
Questions, Council?
Well, we're gonna continue to try to strive to, to continue to open, but just like everybody else, we're gonna do it a modified, careful way. So the next item under my report, Mary, you just want me to keep going?
Yep.
Okay, is a presentation of the five-year capital plan, this year's five-year capital plan. As we talked about, it had originally been scheduled to be presented last month, but when we canceled the meeting, it kind of pushed us forward. I'm assuming everybody got their copy, we hand-delivered the hard copies to everybody's house last week. So, but tonight is just the quick presentation, and we're gonna talk about at the end here, modified schedule for when we can have a work session to get more into the details. Next slide. As you may recall, the five-year plan is, is our strategic financial plan focused on future capital investment and major projects for assets and operations. It's, we try to attempt to have a comprehensive listing of our major capital improvement needs, but obviously, these are focused mainly in parks, streets, utilities, and drainage. It's important, we always want to note that the, the five-year capital plan is just that, it's a plan, it's not, even though it'll ultimately get adopted by the council formally, it not in itself authorizes any appropriation or spending of, of money. As those council will remember, you'll see again, there's a lot of similarities from this project, is from one year to the next, we obviously aren't able to knock out all the projects, but, but we, we basically amend the project from year to year to account for those projects we've completed, and then new projects we might want to add on.
Tom, no, yes, for a moment, can you let the record reflect that at 6:12, Councilmember Ariaga entered the meeting? All right, go ahead, Tom. Welcome.
Next slide.
Thank you.
The format is the same, this is a sample of the sheet of project, each project's listed, includes some brief details about the projects, its benefits to the community, a projected cost, and, and of course, for those projects we're recommended for funding, we'll, we'll include a plan for that funding. Next slide. So the overall numbers included, keep going, my numbers aren't, yeah, next one. Okay. Total capital projects included in the plan, both, this includes projects we've completed, projects that are under construction, and then future projects is, is almost $63 million worth of projects. Next slide. One more. There we go. What I like to start out with too, is to not have a plan, where all we're doing is talking about how we're gonna spend future money, but also to, to remind folks of what we've been investing in the community. And so, the plan itself shows the, the front section of the plan is a listing of the major capital improvements we've completed in just the last four years alone, and that number's correct, 20, this council's been part of reinvesting over $23 million directly back into the community in, in fixed assets, capital infrastructure, major projects. Of course, this includes the rec center, Lee W. Boulevard, some of these bigger projects, but, but because we're in the service business, so much of our annual budget goes to paying normal operating costs, so it, it's, but it's always good for us to be able to demonstrate that we're making long-term investment in the community as well, and, and I think, you know, about $6 million a year, every year for the last four years is a pretty good investment on our part. Next slide. And of course, it's important to note that, that Elgin has, I think, a long history of being very successful and, and aggressive in trying to get grant funds and, and other external sources, reaching out to external sources for our funding. So, so out of that 23-plus million, almost 30% of that has come from grants, private investment by other developers, and other sources, other than just city taxpayers and, and ratepayers. Though the next, so just a quick listing, I'd suggest that, you know, as always, we have, this is structured, the plan is structured, and, and the projects we've completed, the projects that are underway, and then future projects that frankly, we don't, we haven't figured out a funding source yet. But in the middle will be the projects that we're proposing for funding next year, to move forward with these projects. And so I'd encourage council to kind of focus on, on these projects, kind of in the middle part of, of the document. Our utility improvements downtown for the cart station that is scheduled to break ground in September, we want to get off the ground on, on the first phase of County Line Road, been talking about doing the, improving alleys in the downtown area. Demolition, an improvement project for the path building. Hopefully, we can finally get some new restrooms in, in Memorial Park, and these other items here, our wastewater treatment plant expansion project is scheduled to, to be kicked off here by the end of the calendar year, that'll be a major investment for us. And then, of course, we talked recently about, oh, my last one, there's a guy to typo, that shouldn't be milk, that should be M L K, sorry. That, that's the side of our grant project you just heard about last time. So again, though, to the right there, you can see the numbers, $18 million worth of investment is a big chunk for when you're, obviously, a big part of that is the sewer plant, which, which will be compelled to, to do, as council knows, or you've reached the flow numbers at the plant that, that will soon be under, potentially be exposed to T C Q orders to increase the size of the plant, so we really have little choice on that. So that'll be obviously the biggest part of that expenditure. But as you can see, we're also proposing to utilize, utilize a significant part of our, of new park fees that we're generating to hotel motel tax funds, grant funds, so that the, the direct impact for all these projects on the general fund or utility fund should be really limited. Next line. So that's kind of the good news, but, but the bad news is that we've still got a huge number of projects, almost $45 million worth of projects that we've identified that are in the plan, but, but we don't have a, as of yet, a funding source for those projects. But the, the planning function for this plan is just for that. This number was bigger a few years ago, we've continued to knock out those projects. It's important for us to make sure we have, whether or not we're years away from having money, but any project that we want to get done, that we anticipate for the future, I think it's important we begin to plug those into this plan, so at least we can be thinking that way. So, of course, the staff believes that we've identified all the needs in the projects, that the major projects that we should give priority to, but, but we're certainly open to any, any recommendations or suggestions from council about any project that's, that's not in the plan, so let me know if you have any input that way. And then finally, just, we, as I said, we scrambled up our, our plan a little bit, but obviously, we've changed our meeting schedule here, so I was, I, I assume we want to try to do some kind of work session on this plan. I thought about next Tuesday, but I don't know what everybody's availability is, or whether you want to, if you want to stretch it out a little more, then, then, you know, in our typical schedule, we catch up on the budget development, we try to have the public hearing in July on the plan, and then it would be primed to, to adopt in August when we approve the budget. Part of the, the objective here is to have the five-year plan be consistent with the budget itself, so it's always best if we can get the five-year plan approved before we actually finalize the budget. So, these are just some suggested dates, I don't know, any thoughts, anybody has? I don't know if you want to try to nail that down now, Mayor, or we can talk about it later, when, when to get together, or, and, and you know, we've, frankly, we've had years before where we were able to hit the target pretty well, I think, from council standpoint, and, and there wasn't a need to have a work session on the plan, but, but I'm ready to do that, obviously, it's council's pleasure.
I'd like to try to limit most of our, I mean, if we need to have something in June, that's fine, but I would try to, like to see what's gonna happen, it doesn't look like we're gonna be getting in person on any kind of in-person meetings, maybe for another month, but does anybody feel like we need a work session scheduled this month, or, or at all, or y'all want to get back to us on that? Council?
I could, I could just try to send out a group email, Mayor, later this week, and just gauge everybody's input that way, if you want to try it that way.
That'll work. Typically, you have to get into the document before you know if you want to meet or not.
Yeah, I guess that's what I mean, if y'all can get a chance to look at it, and just let me know what your thoughts are, if we need to get together and how we can do that. And obviously, as always, I can meet with individual members, or we can meet in small groups, however you all want to do it.
That'll work.
All right, ready to go on the next one, any, any questions? Okay. Bo, you on there?
I am here.
Oh, cool. So this next item is, and, next slide, please, we just wanted to give you a quick update and briefing, there's, there's a little bit of an issue, we just want to make sure everyone's on the same page about, as you recall, after lengthy deliberation, the council, we made a decision to, to address the, what we called the annexed area here on the eastern side of town, and de-annexed to what was called Area 3, but decided to keep Area 2 in the city limits. And we've begun the project, the project to extend sanitary sewer out to these property owners. Next line, Pam, please. And TRC has begun the planning process, which included some, some, trying to get access on properties, some right-of-way acquisition, we just had a couple issues that we just, for sake of transparency, just wanted to make sure everybody was, was aware of where we're at, because we're, we're reaching a point where we're gonna have to make some decisions and move forward, and, and I, I just say, we've been a little, we'd hope for a different kind of response from some of the property owners we've had out there, so Bo, I'll just let you take it from there.
Okay, um, so as council kind of.
For the record, nobody can see me, are you on camera?
No, I'm not on camera.
I guess. For the record, this is Bo Berry, City Engineer. Go ahead, Bo.
As directed by council, we've been looking at servicing those properties that were annexed in as part of the annexation process, process down 1704, between 1704 on the east side, kind of to the railroad tracks. And we've also looked at it from a higher view, as if property were to develop along the west side of 1704, and so whatever infrastructure we're putting into the ground, we want to ensure that we're gonna not only be able to service those that you have to by the annexation, but that you can also service those in future developments. So we've laid out the sewer line, currently, we're on pace to essentially have the plans ready to go out to bid towards the end of this month, essentially, to get out to public bid, have to go through that process. We have found a property owner that is willing to potentially sell a portion of property for the permanent list station to go on to, the city has getting it appraised this week, that property, so that process can be finalized. The list station will actually be on the west side, it's not going to be on the same side of the road as most of the people that were annexing in, just for the overall layout. We approached every single property owner there that had been annexed, and, and tried to get a request to access their property, so that we could survey at least the foundation of their home, or, you know, a clean out on their septic tank, just to ensure that when we're putting in the gravity sewer line, we're at a depth that we felt confident that at the date that they decide to extend sewer and connect to the city sewer, that we could service them. Unfortunately, quite a few rejected to allow us on their property. Some property owners did, and we have already gone out there and done the survey for those. And then there were a lot of properties that are tied up with no responses from the property owners, just never responded. Everybody was addressed with certified mail receipts, we've tried to follow up. We're kind of at the point of it, that in order to meet the deadlines that are set from the annexation, we can't go through a long, lengthy process of waiting for individual property owners to go. So based on an engineering judgment, we've, we've set the elevations based on the ones we know we have to service, we've done some engineering calculations, engineering rule-of-thum calculations, that we would be able to serve those individual homesteads, you know, at the time that they decide to connect. So essentially, we'll put in the gravity line, we'll extend the sewer service up to their property line, and set a clean out, and put it as deep as possible to allow them the much, their plumber, as much maneuverability as possible. But that being said, I did want to let council know that sewer service will be provided, but because some property owners have refused to allow us on their property at a later date, they may actually shoot the grades, and they may have to do a private grinder station and pump it into the gravity sewer line, as opposed to being able to run along gravity sewer service.
So we're gonna send a, a notice saying that more?
Well, we've, we've already done that, Mayor, I mean, what Bo and I talked about is that, that I may send one more letter under my signature, because it, it, as you know, we're under pressure to get this project done, timing, we can't wait, we've already been real patient, it's just important to, I don't, this doesn't adversely impact our ability to, to meet our requirements to provide the service, it just is, we're just a little surprised, and the property owners are not taking advantage of an opportunity they have here, and, and it could add significant cost to their individual homes later. And, and I'll just also say is, because I'm, I, with all of you that are on me, with council with me now, know that, like every small town, Elgin has issues with, you know, people talking about, well, 20 years ago, they did this thing, and it's, the city messed it, well, none of us may be around, but I, we're gonna really document this part, that, that it's, it's not the city's fault, that, that the line we put in there doesn't accommodate every home. We've literally offered to try to design it so it would, but, but I, for some reason, and as Bo said, they're literally not even, some of these property owners aren't even responding, so, but the point is, we, we just can't wait any longer. We'll try to send them another letter, just to notify them that that's gonna occur, but, but frankly, we see it being an issue more of, we need to move full steam ahead, and, and it's, I think disappointing is the right word, it's disappointing for me that we can't get on the same page with folks, but, but we've tried, we just can't, I assume this, obviously, this whole situation doesn't have a great history, so I assume it's some of that carrying over. I assume this, obviously, this whole situation doesn't have a great history, so I assume it's some of that carrying over.
But anyway, it will be meeting the intent. I guess, Tom, is important to say the design we have right now meets the stipulations of providing sewer service.
Right.
Essentially.
So there's nothing on this item, Mayor, no no real action for council or anything, just wanted you to be aware. We and if anybody has the input or suggestions, we'll be glad to take them. But but as Bo said, we can't. We can't wait much longer, we got to get going.
All right, now that looks good. Anybody have anything, counsel?
I I'm okay with it as long as we've done our due diligence and we have it documented.
Thank you for documenting for the future. That's been a big, somebody's had to live with things from twenty thirty years ago. I appreciate you y'all doing that for the future.
I guess that's why that part's important to me about this. This seems like a classic thing that ten years from now, somebody's going to come up and say, well, the city put the line in the wrong place for my house. And and we just want to make sure that. I'm pretty sure you're gonna have a different city manager in ten years, so. I just want him to be covered when it him or her to be covered when it comes up.
There you go.
All right, next slide. Thanks, Bo. These next next two items we have are actually Amy Miller's going to do a quick report, annual report on both the Elgin Main Street Program. And the Historic Review Board. This is a actually a procedural item that we need to. We're required every year to make this report to the council, so Amy's going to run through those for us. Amy.
Um, hello, everybody. Hi. So Elgin is celebrating thirty years as a Texas Main Street city this year. And it might be surprising that we have been actively participating in this program this long. But I think I believe our district clearly reflects the overall investment. That the citizens and the city councils over the years have made. Kind of our next slide. So I thought I'd start with kind of the most current things in in the past year. On on our part, Main Street has been very active in working with the downtown businesses during COVID nineteen. These signs are an example of some of the marketing support that we coordinated with the Chamber of Commerce and the Economic Development Corporation. The mask posters in particular were in direct response to requests from businesses asking for something that was more fun. And less authoritarian in asking folks to please wear a face covering. We have a couple of versions in the Pigs and the Wildcats, and they're all available on the COVID nineteen website. So that businesses can print them and use them as whichever version they'd like. We have a version that's no mask required and one that says, please wear a mask and one that says masks recommended. The yes, we're open signs were a specific effort as folks were adjusting how they were. Being open as a business, whether they were going virtual, we had signs made that said they were open virtually. And then we also did these that were really addressing as the governor started to relax restrictions. We were helping the businesses promote that they were physically opening. The downtown district and the community overall have done really well in getting through COVID so far. It's our next one. We also have a specific emergency marketing grant that the Main Street Program launched and is funding for downtown businesses. So the ones listed here are the ones that have been approved at this time. But this is a monthly grant that's available to downtown businesses. They can apply every month, they can receive up to one hundred dollars reimbursed in marketing expenses. And we have had folks submit everything from developing online stores to working with consultants on their social. Media presence using Facebook or Instagram. We've had folks submitting ads for the Elgin Courier or for boosted posts on social media platforms. Just it's been wide open. The goal was to to provide a program that was easy to access and that would allow the businesses to really. Do the marketing that works for them and that reaches their customers and it helps them successfully. Promote themselves with all the changing business circumstances that they're dealing with. So this program will continue to be available and it's an online application that's available on the COVID nineteen website with the city. Our next one. And one of our really touchstone projects for the past, this has actually been going on for about a year and a half. But this is the Rivers Building at one ten South Main Street. And there are many programs that Main Street implements throughout the year or that we partner with other entities or local organizations. To do to promote the district. And this building ended up selling and being completely renovated because of one of those programs. And so that's the Imagine the Possibilities tours that we were able to host in person before COVID. Where we would do tours in May and October, bring business investors, lending officers, real estate folks. This property was showcased in our first Imagine the Tours, Imagine the Possibilities. It did sell to an investment group from Austin, and they are now finishing their renovation. They'll be open later this summer. It is fourteen loft apartments and fourteen hundred square feet of commercial space. As you can see, they've completely rebuilt the storefronts. Put back on the the rolled tin awning that's such a classic awning style for our downtown district. Replaced all the windows, including all the second floor windows with architecturally appropriate, historically accurate wood frame windows. And they're having great success with their initial pre leasing. And we're going to have a really fantastic building to visit virtually initially in July. And then we'll all look forward to getting to to visit some of the spaces in person. But again, this is just one example of the many projects that the Main Street Program, which. As a city board that's appointed by the mayor and council, help implement. And so that's kind of the highlights that we wanted to share today. We included in your executive summary, a lot more detailed information about dollars of reinvestment, number of buildings reinvested. You have a very high occupancy rate in your downtown district and about a little over a hundred locally owned businesses. That are located in the Main Street area. So thank you to all our volunteers that helped make our program a success and to all our partners throughout the community.
Good, any questions, counsel? All right.
I do, I real quick, I do.
Go ahead, Brad.
What's the status on Joseph's, do we know?
I spoke to Yamil probably about a month ago. They did not have a a date to announce. He did say that they are still working on the apartments and they have installed the new sign. And that sign had been reviewed and approved some months prior, actually, before the the COVID crisis.
Okay, I was just I was just curious.
Yeah, go ahead.
Amy, to apply for that grant, they don't have to be a member of the Chamber of Commerce, do they?
No, they just it it is directed at businesses in the in the downtown business area. So it's the the overall downtown business district, because it's the Main Street Program that's funding that grant. But there's no membership requirements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I could jump in here, Brad, since you brought it up, I'll just say that the Joseph's project, we're trying to work hard with them. There's there's a handful of issues still they got to resolve before they can get a CO. The planning department, Amy, continue to try to dialogue with them, but frankly. Hot and cold, and we're trying to do our best, we want to accommodate them. I just want to get it in there, it's in our interest that they open, we want to try to help them do that. But but we're we're trying to do our best, but we'll we'll sure let everybody know as soon as they're ready.
And Amy, are we still for July first for a go no go on Hog Eye Festival?
The the board is is working to review what some options are and and what to do. They have not made a a decision. July is their goal for making a decision about the Hog Eye Festival for this year.
I would imagine if if you're gonna do it, you, I mean, you usually were working by July first, right? In a regular.
Yes.
I think that'd just pop up out of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Hog Eye starts in June around here. All right, so anybody else for the Main Street Board? All right, the Historic Review Board report?
Yes, thank you. So the Historic Review Board is also appointed by the city council. We have another slide. This map shows you just kind of a bird's eye view of the overall downtown area. That map shows you the zoning overlay, which is what's the yellow and blue. But if you'll notice the dotted red line, that indicates your historic district. So the business district is bigger than the historic district. We can bump to our next slide. So what your Historic Review Board does is reviews any changes to the exterior of a property that are visible from the public right of way. And so we, they look at all the sign applications for downtown, overall facade applications. If maybe an awning had been removed in the past and the property owner wants to put an awning back on. Those sorts of things are the projects that they review. The board looked at twenty eight applications in the past year. Certainly, the two largest ones were this property, which is now Elgin Wellness. And this was completely renovated, this property had been vacant, if we can go back to Wellness, thanks so much, Pam. This property was vacant for probably almost a decade and was vastly underutilized before that. Brenda and Kenny Chambers, who owned the wellness shop on Depot Street and releasing property there, they purchased this property. And completely renovated it, retained the original pressed in ceiling, replaced with the missing. Transom windows with architecturally appropriate transom windows, retained the original storefront, which includes copper molding. And and is a unique storefront because of the type of businesses that were there in the past. And so they have now got a commercial space for their wellness shop. They have a second tenant, twelve star massage, has a studio room here and is now offering their. Massage services there, and then they have an apartment at the rear. So this is another property that's taken advantage of that zoning overlay to do the split work live space. And then in our next one is one ten South Main Streets that you heard about under the Main Street Program. And is definitely a shining example of major renovation. This one actually was vacant for probably more like fifteen years and was vastly underutilized. The second floor had been vacant since probably the seventies is my understanding. So in renovating properties, we're not only creating a greater number of of business uses and and residential opportunities. But just bringing property back to to full occupancy. The Historic Review Board typically meets on the fourth Tuesday of the month. And there, again, their job is to review these exterior changes and ensure that they are compliant. With the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines for historic preservation.
Any questions, counsel?
I have one, it kind of is not related to that, but she said twelve star massage and that reminded me of Taco House. And what happened to that awning and are we doing anything about it?
It failed.
I was gonna ask the same.
Yeah, so that deck roof cover over the the adjacent deck property did collapse at about three o'clock in the morning, two Sundays ago. It has been reviewed by ATS, our contractual inspection company that the city uses. The property owner is working with his insurance company to have the insurance review. And ultimately, that will be cleaned up and 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 taken out. And then we have placed barricades and are directing people around that section of the sidewalk for the time being.
David, are you on there, do you have anything to add to that?
I have nothing to add to that.
Okay, but there.
All I get, well, actually, I do, I apologize. We've actually sent notice to the owner, he's got a thirty day window to get a permit to clean it up. None of the other buildings are at issue there where that was was attached or next to it. We're just awaiting for the owner to get that property cleaned up. And if not, we'll have to take the building standards commission to initiate that. And that's it.
How long, how long has he got there?
I think it's thirty days, is that what you said, David?
Thirty days, I think, from the day he received the letter. Thirty days from the date of the receiving of the letter. We sent the letter out last week, so he's still got fifty to twenty more days to come in and get a permit for it.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
All right, Mayor, let me keep going and finish up here, just got a couple of other items. You have the department reports and your packets, as always, if you have any questions, let us know. Amy, don't go. What did you? Did you want to say something about the census, Amy?
Oh, I would love to, thank you very much. You all, I'm sure, have probably heard that the deadline for responding to the census has been extended due to COVID nineteen. We continue to have a very active and specific effort to encourage people to reply to the census throughout Bastrop County. And so I am hoping that you all, just personally, whatever you can do to encourage folks through your social networks. And your professional networks to complete the census, it does critically affect our community. It, everything from business locations to the many grant dollars that our community receives. Those are all impacted by the census numbers. And so I also have an opportunity, if you would like to do a short video supporting the census, I'm happy to come meet you. And socially distance, but take a nice video of you. And I also have yard signs available. If you are in a high traffic area, like yard sign, just drop me an email and we'll get you fixed up for that.
Go ahead and put me on that list, Amy. I've I've been meaning to get with you on that.
Great, thanks.
Mayor, I just had one last thing, then I wanted to mention that as the council's aware. We had some issues arise late last week regarding some personnel matters in the Elgin Police Department. That generated some interest in the community. Since briefed the mayor and council about the basic issues involved there. And and while we provided that information to you, I think our discussion. Generated some some questions and and some requests for additional information. That the staff will be working on to generate a report, to a written report to share with council. Attempting to address some of those issues. So obviously, this is an item that that surprised us last week and happened literally at the end of the day on Friday. So. That's why there's nothing on the agenda about it, and and obviously, we can't talk about it tonight in any detail. But I just wanted wanted to have it on the record that that we've we've. I I hope we've answered initial questions and we've got some more information coming and we'll be able to discuss it further as warranted.
Sounds good, thank you.
That's all that, Mayor, that's the, that's all our report.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Nothing, none in general activity?
No, sir, not unless they have any questions about anything we didn't, we didn't mention.
Counsel?
Mayor?
Yes.
I had, my mic was off, I wanted to speak something about the five year plan, but I'll get with Tom if that's what I need to do tomorrow or the day after. Is that okay?
Okay.
Yeah, fine, either day should be generally flexible, want to just call me when you're available, we'll get together.
Okay. Then move us to the consent agenda, we only got one item, which is verify. Verifying the minutes for the May twelfth meeting, which are, which was our. verifying the minutes for the May 12th meeting, which was our last one. Does, Sue, did you have any changes? I didn't see any sent in.
They were minimal, so I let them go.
Okay. Alright, well, then I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda item as presented.
Some of it.
A second.
Got a motion by Councilman Brazier and a second by Pinson. Is that right?
Yeah. Eagle.
Okay. Okay, then I'll call for a vote.
Yes?
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon here. Yeah, Cannon, yes.
Pinson, yes.
Ega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Hello, Forrest. Howard, Gonzalez, yes. Gonzalez, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you, Forrest. We got you, Juan. We're waiting on Forrest to say.
Yeah, I know that the mic goes off.
Golly, I can't wait to get to, back in the meeting again. Okay.
So Brett, did you vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry.
So that, has anybody voted no? Can you speak up? I don't think so. That passes unanimously. I'm almost positive. Alright, thank you, Council. Item number one under new businesses and ordinance of the City of Elgin, Texas, amending the amount of was that for me? Okay. An ordinance to the City of Texas, the amount of appropriations for the general fund, as well as all funds that provide for the payment and operating of capital expenditures and by changing the amount appropriated for various departments of the City of Elgin, as originally adopted by ordinance number 2019-9-24-13, adopted September 24th in 2019. And accordance with the local government code of the State of Texas and ordinance and rule of the City of Elgin, Texas appropriating the various amounts thereof and repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for publication and effective date. Alright, thank you. Staff?
Mayor, this item is our kind of routine mid-year budget amendment we make every year. Where we try to adjust our appropriations to properly reflect true expenditures and so we don't get in trouble with the auditor later. So don't, this doesn't represent any significant substantial financial impact, but just the same, I'm gonna have, Charles is gonna touch on kind of the high points for us.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is the first two amendments that we'll be doing this year. This one is after about six months of operations. When you start a budget, there's kind of some built-in adjustments that have to be made along the way. So this is the first attempt to kind of get back to, based on the experience we've had, to kind of top up those areas where we're running out of appropriations and make sure our revenue is performing the way we had anticipated it to do. The biggest changes, I think, of course, this is exhibit one and on page one, which you go through each one of the funds. And the page one begins with a general fund, where I've summarized all the revenue and all the expenditures for each in this fund. And have noted on the second page, some of the reasons for the adjustments that were made. A lot of them on the revenue side. On the taxes, we have a little bit better idea of the final assessed value because we get a monthly report from the county every, that shows where the final appropriations are. And plus the collections here today, right now, we're looking at 97% of the collections for property tax year-to-date through the month of May. So we're in pretty good shape on that one. Sales tax, you might be interested to know that we're, for the year, quite a bit ahead of what my original estimates were. And that includes from the funds that were reported in April, which is actually, say, March collections. It's possible that we'll see a dip in the next couple of months, but year-to-date so far, we're way ahead of what my estimates were. So I feel pretty comfortable that we have a pretty good cushion going forward on the sales tax. Where we're really making up some ground is on the development fees. If you'll recall, back in October, when we passed really a comprehensive fee schedule, where we increased quite a bit the fees that we're charging for developers. And some of them, in some cases, even doubled. And that's been reflected in the collections to date with the general activity that we've had with developers. So we feel pretty good about that going forward. But that's been, hasn't slowed down despite the fact that the COVID pandemic. Where we are on the revenue side, where we are seeing some impact is, of course, on the fines and forfeitures because we haven't been able to hold court for several months now. And we still have some people coming in, but I reduced what I expect to collect by $75,000, well, over $75,000 in fines and forfeitures over the next year, or for the rest of the year. Everything else is pretty nominal. We're doing pretty well on the revenue side. For the general fund, I think we'll be fine. On the expenditure side, it's also went kind of department by department showing what some of the major adjustments have been. Mostly, when we start out in the budget year, we have fully funded all of positions that we have, whether they're filled or not. And some of those start out with vacancies, or we have vacancies that come up from time to time over the year. So we do have salary savings in those areas. So we do have some savings there. Also, one of the big things was that I had anticipated that fuel costs were gonna go up because if you recall, back in October, they were approaching $3 a gallon for regular gasoline. And we've got down to as low as $1.50. So there has been some sorry saving, or some savings in fuel cost across the board. So the, for the general fund, we're looking at still the possibility of finishing the year if things go the way I'm programmed right now by having a surplus of about $50,000. On the utility funds, the water revenue is exceeding what my estimate was. The sewer revenue, wastewater service fees are a little bit lower than what I thought. And I'm thinking that probably in October, when we, when we present the new budget to you, that we'll probably have a rate increase for the wastewater because the flows have been reduced for some reason. I think mostly it's because the INIs been reduced because we hadn't had a lot of rain. So the wastewater revenue collection is a little bit lower than what we anticipated. But the water is up, so those kind of cancel each other out. So we should be pretty safe on the wastewater and the water utility fund. The, I did want to point out on the, on the debt service fund, that's the easiest thing to estimate, the revenue and the expenditures. And I did add a certain amount. If you'll recall, a couple of meetings ago, we borrowed $856,000 to buy 17 pieces of equipment. And that loan is structured so that we pay in August. We have August and January payments twice a year. And the first one's gonna be $320,000. And that'll, we did have some reserve funds in our INS funds, so that will easily make that payment. And then thereafter, we pay about $50,000 a year between the INS fund from general fund and for our property taxes and then transfers from the utility fund. So the debt service fund is in really good shape. Like I say, the property tax is about 97% collected on the current property. So property taxes, so we're in pretty good shape there. On page 40, on the special revenue funds, I went, I just wanted to highlight on the red light camera fund. We're not, we opted out of that last year. So we've used all the funds that normally we would use to support the police operations. And going forward after next year, those funds will be depleted. But we did have the transfers that were required to meet the general fund requirements for the police department for this year. The hotel motel tax, that's another thing that's going down. Of course, with the lack of guests that they have, that the hotels that we have, that's gonna reduce the number and that'll have an impact on the, some of the things that we, that are supported out of that fund, like the Chamber of Commerce, which their subsidy that we give them is based on the collection of hotel motel taxes. So next year, they're probably gonna be a little bit less than what we've been providing in the past. Everything else, the cable franchise subscriber fee is about what it's been in the past. So every, all the special revenue funds are performing about what was estimated that we broadly expected. I did have, at the end, the economic development corporation. Again, sales taxes were way ahead of what I'd estimated for this year. So assuming that even if there is a little bit of a drop over the next couple of months, they'll be able to easily fund all of the operations and the programs that they have that are funded through the economic development corporation. And on the tour, it's the same way. That's mostly property tax and the subsidy from the, from the county came in a little bit more than what I had anticipated. So I will be able to meet our debt requirements on that one, too. So that's kind of a quick review of all the funds. If anybody has any questions about any specific thing, if anything jumped out at them, I'd be happy to answer your questions if I have.
Questions, Council? Alright.
I just made that quick. I'm just adding real quick, I want to obviously commend Charles in this work. I think this is an example of why, you know, people want to know about standard questions. What are we doing with the money? And you can tell the amount of work that went into this amendment, as does the budget. But this is the way we secure public confidence to let people know. So anybody ever asks you a question about how we're spending money, encourage them to read this, this kind of ordinance, to read these adjustments, to see these projections. And the short wrap-up is, though, Charles, is we're, operating fund-wise, we're projecting a slight surplus. We're in good shape. And that includes our anticipated impacts of COVID and the fact, as you've been saying, we're cautious, but we haven't really seen big impacts of that moving forward. And then finally, I just wanted to make sure that Councilman Gonzalez heard, no more red light camera fund. So put that away for good.
There never was, was there?
It doesn't matter now.
Leading me to a question. Mr. Mayor, if we ran out of the red light camera fund, are we gonna have to raise the police department's request in the future or what?
Well, that will be
Start first, Charles, and you can jump in. I, it would seem, you know, again, we, we did use the red light camera fund. I think that helped most, like most agencies, maybe purchase some things that step up the level of your service. But as you know, we evolved to a point where we're using that for pretty basic expenditures. So it's a hit. We're gonna have to figure out how to absorb. Charles?
Yeah, basically, the help that it did was made us able to improve and upgrade a lot of the technology that the police department uses. We got a lot of that done. But as the useful life of the servers and those things that we've bought are used up, we're gonna have to replace them in two, three years. So I think with, generally with the growth of the city and some of the things that are gonna be happening as far as the increase in AV and that we'll be able to provide still the highest technology that the police department needs going forward. I did want to add one thing on the last, you usually don't do this, make any changes in staffing, but we did make a couple of changes. It's kind of summarized them all on page 52 in the appendix. There was just a few reclassifications. No increases except for a half a position and a new classification, CID division. We had a part-time physician that, we had a gentleman that is, was doing a lot of extra work and we had him in the administration division. He was mostly, was hired originally to do the, excuse me?
Go ahead, Charles.
To do the, exactly what was Charlie Stone doing on the?
He was handling the evidence room, Charles.
The evidence room, right. So we want to move him out of administration into the CID and make that a full-time position and establish a corporate and make that a full-time position and establish a corporal level position for him. So that's indicated in the summary of the changes that we want to make. Then on the utility division, we were just moving people around. There's no net increase at all. Just same number of positions, but we're just moving around from a couple of from the between the water and wastewater and but that all of those changes are reflected in that appendix A. So if you approve the the ordinance, you'll be approving all those changes.
Does that answer your question, Juan?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Forrest, you have something?
Well, I just wanted to make an observation that our sales stack was probably up because of all the toilet paper we sold in March.
Yeah, no doubt. Okay. Any other questions? Alcohol sales had to have something to do with it, too. I have some reserves. I have been busy. Any other questions, comments from staff or council? All right, then I would entertain a motion to pass the ordinance as presented.
I'm moved.
Second.
I have no idea where that second came from.
No, Jones.
Jones, okay. That might help. Actually, if y'all don't mind putting y'all's last name when y'all say it. All right, I got a motion by Brazier and a second by Jones. Any other questions? And we'll call for a vote soon. Cannon, yes?
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Thank you, staff. Moving on to item number two, First Amendment to Chapter three eighty Economic Development Agreement between City of Elgin and Circle Brewing Company, LLC. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Council recalls this is a project, we're exciting project we're working on to get rolling. Circle Brewery has kind of had a little bit of a perfect storm of some of their issues. This is not only by far their biggest project, but first kind of construction project they've managed. They the COVID situation came in and and made some changes. So so it's really a couple of issues that have caused the project to delay. And but they tell us that they believe that they'll they're optimistic they're going to have a groundbreaking before the end of the summer. But they're but this action tonight is about extending their three eighty development agreement they have with the city. I think it was set to expire at the end of this month. Maybe I forget exactly when, but 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 technically, we need to extend that agreement, formally approve extending that agreement for sales tax sharing so they can get the project underway. This this request was reviewed and unanimously approved by the EDC Board of Directors. We were confident they're still very much committed. It's just kind of entering had a couple of things they didn't anticipate, aren't able to move quite as fast as they want.
Okay, any questions from Council? Definitely understandable. All right, I'll entertain a
Mayor, I guess I want to say for the record, this all we're doing is extending an agreement that says whatever few shoot your sales tax they generate, we'll share in them. This action doesn't cost the city anything. Doesn't doesn't
We've already passed this, right? We're just extending it.
We've already approved their agreement. I just don't I think it should be said, we're not approving this extension, doesn't add any expense, any cost to the city.
Fair enough. Questions, Council? All right, I'll entertain a motion to pass the amendment as presented.
Dennis, I'm listening.
Second.
Second by Lopez.
I'm going with the name. A motion by Dennis and a second by Lopez. If there's any other, any other questions? Hold on a second. I I don't. Let's start with Forrest. Start the button, Forrest.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Jones, yes.
That passes unanimously and musically sound. Thank you very much, Council.
Yeah, that rim shot after you talked, Mayor, seems kind of a
I like that. I'm gonna have to get my own over here. Item number three, resolution, the City of Elgin, Texas, authorizing the award of professional service provider contract for the Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Medigation, CBDG, MIT program. Just when I had that acronym down, they changed it on me. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Amy's going to speak to this one.
This is a program that we're eligible for that we haven't determined what the project would be. We would be working with this grant administrator to address a project that would be successful. But we're specifically specifically eligible for it through the the Community Development Block Grant Program. We've received proposals from Grant Works and from community management services. Those were reviewed by a committee that included city council member Sue Brasher and three staff people, Charles, Laura Schwartz, and myself. And the recommended firm is Grant Works. They will, upon hiring them, they will help us develop our application. And if we were successful and received funding, they would also be the administrator that would support us through implementing that grant.
Are they paid for out of the grant? That's usually the first question.
Right, at this point, there is not a financial obligation, but if we are successful with the grant, the grant will include funding for the administration of the grants, and this company would be the one that we would use for that.
Well, we like. Questions, Council?
Do we have any idea what the amount is?
No, not that. That'll depend on the project.
Now, anyway, that that's all subject change to check cashes.
With you, you guys will hear from us again with a specific proposal related to the the application.
This is only to hire the consultant, correct, Amy?
Yes.
We don't have a project yet, so.
Okay, well, then if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
Sub moved. Jones.
Second, Lopez.
I didn't notice, I didn't recognize without the drums that time. I got a motion, motion by Jones and a second by Lopez. Any other questions? Is that background or somebody got a question? Oh, this is really hard on my end, y'all. All right, then I'll call for a vote. Brad, start the vote.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Penson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Amy, for that work, staff. Item number four, resolution, the City of Elgin, Texas, authorizing the award of professional service provider contractor for the Texas Community Development Block Grant to twenty twenty Downtime Revitalization Fund. Tom, Amy.
Oh, hi. This is another Community Development Block Grant program, but it is administered through the Department of Agriculture as opposed to the General Land Office. There are a whole separate set of requirements for how you solicit grant administration services for both those programs. And it does require separate action. In this instance, we did receive two proposals, again, from the same two firms. We have a required review committee that evaluated those proposals. The recommended firm is Grant Works. They again would assist us with the application determining the most successful project that could be submitted for this. And then if we're successful and receive funding, this firm would be the one that would administer that grant and help us successfully implement the project.
Okay, questions, Council? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the res- pass the resolution as presented.
One second, Dennis.
That helps a lot. I got a motion by Brazier and a second by Dennis. Any other questions? I'll call for a vote.
Lopez, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. Item number five, resolution, the City of City Council, the City of Elgin, Texas, authorizing the submission of the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund Grant to the Texas Department of Emergency Management for the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund and authorizing the Assistant City Manager, City Manager and/or the Mayor to act as the city's executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Fund. Of all things, not to make an acronym, they choose that one. All right, staff?
Thanks, Mayor. This item, that's pretty self-explanatory, I guess. We we've been the staff from the beginning has obviously been tracking our expenditures related to coronavirus pandemic. And this is the first procedural step to enable us to request reimbursement of relief funds as being provided by the state of Texas. So Charles, is there anything to add to that?
No, I there's, we're actually two options. We could either have gone with Terrapin County or or applied ourselves. And by applying ourselves, we can, we increase the possibility of getting up to five hundred over five hundred thousand dollars with a first payment of twenty percent of that with a little over a hundred thousand that we can get right away. Now, I don't think that we're going to come anywhere close to those expenses because there it's very restrictive on on what you can ask reimbursement for. But that gives us the best possibility of getting as much refund as we can. And I just want to say that I didn't include this, I don't want to count my chickens before they hatch. So none of this money is included in the much of the amendment as possibility of funding. So anything that we get is going to be above and beyond what was in the amended budget, but we'll we'll pick that up at the the last amendment.
All right, sounds good. Any other questions, Council?
I'm curious, what type of expenses qualify for the for the grant?
Well, most directly is any expenses for materials that we, I think mostly for the signs that we had to have printed up. There's very little that is covered that wasn't, if it wasn't already budgeted amounts in the original budget back in October. They won't give you reimbursement for any of those. So when you take all of that out, there's not a whole lot left that that we can recover our expenses other than overtime and any salaries of people that were spent most of their time working on implementing the the stages that we went through. So it's very limited on the amount that you can recover under this program.
Okay, is that good, Suzy?
Yes, thank you.
All right, other questions, Council? All right, well, I'll entertain a motion to pass the resolution as presented. Okay, so I got a motion by Penson and a second by Jones. Any other questions? Now I'll call for a vote, Mayor.
Benson, yes.
Vega, yes.
Lopez, yes.
Jones, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Fraser, yes.
Ariaga, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Cannon, yes. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Council. I'll be damned. That brings us to the end. That was quick for quicker than I thought it was going to go tonight. Thank y'all. Anything under announcements from staff first?
No, I don't think so. Amy, you got anything we haven't talked about already?
I do not. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for your support on the census.
Okay, Council, anybody got anything? Anything that hasn't been addressed already this week? All right, well, I guess we can, nobody has anything, I'll adjourn us at seven twenty-six. All right, thank you very much. We stand adjourned.
Thank you.